We traveled this week out of our family. We say hello to you guys, continue to stay safe. We are praying for you. We are thankful for wherever this message goes throughout the world via the internet. It is a blessing that we are able to do that. We have shifted in this resurrection season into the series of trust amidst the dark. Trusting, which really interpreted trusting God amidst the dark. We don't, we're not just trusting anything. We're definitely not trusting ourselves because the arms of flesh will do what? Every single time, every single time, the arms of flesh will fail you. So we are training this flesh to submit to the Spirit of God. Because they that are led by the Spirit, these are the sons of God. These are the children of God. So we are thankful for this opportunity. So grab your sword. This is Bible study night. We want to go just for a few moments into this time of study as we continue to remember the passion of our Lord and Savior. So I'm talking, of course, to us with regards this trust amidst the dark. But I hope you got the appreciation for what I did just now in talking about in talking in Matthew 26 of the Lord as he went through that kangaroo trial because it really wasn't legal what they did at all. They just desperately wanted our Savior out of the picture. For these men, these religious men, this was really a political move. They were jealous of our Savior. He did nothing wrong. He did not hurt anybody. He was healing wherever he went. He was bringing revelation of what the scripture means. He was showing love and kindness. He was eliminating Dr. Bills even without trying. One particular case, I'm sure you know which case I'm talking about. This lady was bleeding for 12 years, every single day, nonstop. Jesus didn't lay hands on her. He didn't say any magical, anything to her at all. He was just walking. As a matter of fact, he was anointed and going to heal somebody else. Glory be to God. But this woman said to herself after 12 years, spending all her money at the doctor's office, she says, "I believe I ain't got nothing else to hold on to. I believe if I could just but touch the hem of his garment, that this situation would end. My bleeding would stop. My body would be healed. Glory be to God." And she heard that he was passing by. She made her way through the crowd. She pressed her way through the crowd. I'd love to make a movie about that. Pressed her way through the crowd and just got to the tippy tip of his garment, touched it, and immediately she knew she was healed. Glory be to God. And immediately Jesus knew that virtue had left him. And I always talk about the significance of that moment because there were a lot of people touching him. The apostles highlighted it. They tried to say to Jesus, "Man, Jesus, you crazy. What you talking about? All these people around you, you gonna ask the question, 'Who touched me?'" It's like me asking a question right now. Let's say one of y'all look at me and go to healing, looking at me. And who, who, who look at me? I say, "Yeah, Master lost his mind. Something happened to him." He said, but he said it because this touch was different. This person who touched him extracted something from him spiritually, spiritually. And how was she able to do it? By way of faith. Not everybody touching is employing faith. And this is the reason why some get healed and others don't very often. Glory be to God. Picture it. See it. See all those people touching him. And one lady's touch of the tip of his garment got her healed. It's a matter of faith. So I always talk about the fact that Yeshua, when he comes to earth, when he manifests, he comes to be a model, same model. Not like Tyra Banks, but he comes to be a model to us of how to live a godly life, how to live a life that's pleasing unto God. Because many came before him in the name of prophet. Because you know, some people tried to limit Christ to just simply being a prophet. He was much more than a prophet. He was much more than a prophet. That's to insult him, to limit him to simply being a prophet. All right? But those prophets that we can study before Yeshua, they all failed in one way or the other. They all were inconsistent in one way or the other. They doubted at some point. They disobeyed at some point. Not Yeshua. Yeshua, Yeshua was faithful, as scripture tells us, even unto the death of the cross, which he had the power to stop. That's the part that gets me as I think about it. He could have stopped it. Very few of us are gonna go through pain for anybody else in this life. I don't care who you love. The closest of willingness to go through pain for another, we will probably see in this human existence, is a mother for her new baby. Not her old baby. For her new baby. Now, old baby keep crying, hush him out. All right? You get the point. But Yeshua, for us stubborn, hard-headed humans, who was not even looking for him in the way we should have, he came to die for us. While we, scripture says, while we were yet in sin, Christ died for us, not even looking for him. But he had to go through a very dark place. And his dark place, in my opinion, begins in Gethsemane, as we sing in that song just now. "Lest I forget..." So we sing worse sometimes. We don't even know what we're singing. "Lest I forget Gethsemane. Lest I forget that my Savior had to go through a dark place." Where his feelings are not in a positive place. Where he is alone and abandoned. Anybody know what it feels like to be abandoned? Of course you do. I do too. Some of you may not be old enough to know what it feels like to be betrayed, but I believe a few of us in here know what it feels like to be betrayed. It's not a good feeling. Anybody here know what it is to ask for help and people can help you and they look you in the face, but do not help? Now, I want you to think for a second that when he went back to Peter and the boys and said, "Would you wait for me one hour?" I don't think they said, "No." I think, "Jesus, we got your back." But he goes a few steps further and he begins to pray and somehow, something, not something, I believe this Holy Spirit said, "Go check on the boys." And he goes back on check on them. What are they doing? And I don't want you to think it's a long time because he says at the end of this whole thing, he says, "Y'all couldn't stay up an hour? Just one hour." That's why I like our prayer means to be at least that one hour window. Because I think there's something significant about that. Like he's saying, "If at least they one hour, we could, we could get some powerful things done." wakes them up, he goes back, prays again. I'm imagining him saying, "Y'all get it back. Come on, let's pray. Let's, let's the devil get you in temptation." And I can imagine them rallying up, "Jesus, we got you. We got you." And he goes off praying. And he gives you, he gives you some turmoil because he is thinking about all, I believe, he has to go through. I believe he is being tempted at the same time. I talk about that for years. Some things are going on in that moment. I'll prove it to you in scripture, maybe later, maybe on Good Friday or Resurrection Sunday. We'll see how he goes. But, but he's been tempted beyond measure. And he gets up, finds the strength together to see if they're praying because I think his thing is this, if they're praying, I should have some undergirding strength. I should feel some power. You can tell when people praying for you and when they're not. That's why I don't like, I don't like to say casually to people, like you know, people call, say, "Pastor, please pray for me." Because I know a lot, life is busy, a lot of things happen. I usually try to pray right there. Because I don't want to lie to you and you depend on this prayer and I never pray. Don't casually tell people to pray for them and you don't pray for them. It's not good. Better not to make a vow and to make a vow and break it according to scripture. So, so set up prayer real quick, even if you don't say it in their hearing, when they hang the phone up, you start praying right there. Say, "God, my prayer is registered. Please help my brother, help my sister." They're not praying, they're sleeping. Jesus is, you know, they're hardest willing with the flesh is weak. And he has to go through that dark moment alone. Anybody ever been in any really difficult circumstances and felt like nobody else was there? I got a surprise for you. You should be celebrating and praising God because there were others who went through the same thing and what they did was commit suicide. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. You are, you are stronger than you realize. I'm saying that to somebody, somebody needs to hear that tonight. Glory be to God. You have overcome more than you realize. Oh, I'm in prophetic territory here. You hear me by the power of the Holy Ghost. Situation that you think was no big deal because you got over it and you forgot it, you, you think it was nothing that you went through. No, you went through stuff that took some people out. The devil does not play this for playing sake. He comes to kill, comes to steal, comes to destroy. And when he tries to hit you first, it's in your mind. And we play around sometimes and we limit things because we think the mind battle is a small thing. No, the mind battle is the biggest field. That's the biggest grounds. You got victory over the mind? Trust me, you are more than a conqueror. You're more than a conqueror. You are an overcomer through Christ who strengthens you. God expects us to trust Him no matter the circumstance. He expects us to trust Him. I didn't, I don't think I gave you this on Sunday, but Hebrews 11 and verse 6. God desires to be believed. Whenever I express things about God in terms of, especially in the realm of Him desiring something, it's, I get very, I feel very humbled inside to even say those words out of my mouth, to think that the all-powerful source of all things has desires for something that we can give Him. That should be very humbling and you should consider yourself very privileged. And more importantly, you should give Him what He wants. Give Him what He wants. Hebrews 11, verse 6. But without faith, it is impossible to please Him. Pause there right there. So you know, faith and trust can sometimes be synonyms, one for the other. If you don't trust God, if you don't have faith in His ability to do the impossible, it is impossible for you to please Him. And if you don't please Him, you don't receive favor. Now, you can go through emotions, you can go through all the emotions in the world, but if you don't have faith, now please understand this too. I'm gonna tie this into, it's better to obey than to sacrifice. When the Bible talks about sacrifice, sacrifice is a synonym for the word worship. It is better to obey God than worship. Because if God is telling you to do something and then you just stand there, "Oh, I love you, Jesus. I love you, Jesus. Hallelujah, I love you, Jesus." Go do this! "Oh, I love you, Jesus. I love you." And you think you've been spiritual. You've been a witch. Because disobedience is as a sin, witchcraft. Without faith, without obedience, it is impossible to please God. For he that cometh to God must believe that he is. He, he must believe. Because if you believe that there is a Creator, if you believe that there's a being that spoke and then things came into existence, if you believe that you are here because He desired you to be here, you can't freely instruct from Him. You are not. You can't be in your right mind to do that. Because if He has the power to put me here, I would imagine He has the power to take me out of here too. Scripture says, "Fear not he that can destroy the body and thereafter nothing else, but only fair him who can destroy both the body and the soul." Inhale, that's only God. That's only God. Come to God, he must believe that he is. He must trust that he is real. There's so many people, they do studies now of believers. I've seen studies where they say so many people go to church, big, huge percentage of them, especially in America, I think this test was done in America, that they go to church, they worship and everything, but they don't really, they're not really sure that God is real. I talked about this, Alessandria, the worship retreat. The reason is why people in between, though they're in church, trying to figure whether God is real or not, is because they have not had an encounter. They've not had their Damascus Road experience. And I pray that every single believer in this church and every single believer in the world, I pray that they will have their Damascus Road encounter. That is where you meet Jesus, as it were, face to face. It's not literally face to face, but you meet Jesus face, you have the encounter where you are not able to deny from that point on whether he is real or not. Because in that moment, he's real to you. He says, he says to Saul before he becomes Paul, he says, "Son, why do you kick against the prick? All you're doing is damaging your foot. You can't kick against a prick in wind. You, you gonna destroy yourself. I am he, who is and forevermore will be. I am he, the Alpha and the Omega. Glory be to God. By me, everything was made. There's nothing made that was not made by me." He must first believe that he is. And not only now, now that you're in the trust position, then you go further after believing that God is who he says he is, then you go further and you believe also that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek Him. Really, that diligent seek is how we get an encounter. When Saul had his encounter, he was a man most miserable, most confused. You must understand that the apostle Paul, Saul, before he became Paul, he was the man holding the garments of the people who stole Deacon Stephen. And he's there confused because he's a devout Jew. He believes scripture, at least he talked about the Old Testament scripture. We didn't have the New Testament at the time. He is a student of Gamaliel, which is of the highest order in terms of the legal fraternity at the time. He's studying under the wisest people. He's an intelligent young man. He is a zealot, the Bible calls him. And there he is, holding the garments because he believes that this, that this virus called followers of Christ and the ideology and the teaching of Christ is destroying the true believer of God. And so he is in support of them, killing this man who gives the revelation that Yeshua or Jesus is the Son of God. Are y'all still here? Glory be to God. And so he's standing there with the garments. And what I believe confuses him is that while he is being stoned, he looks up and he doesn't say, "Ow!" Or, "Please stop." He looks up and says, "I see Jesus." Good God almighty, Stephen, it's your time to beg for mercy. They killing you because you're talking about Jesus and now you say, "You see Jesus?" So they're standing there, pondering in the rocks. "I see Jesus standing at the right hand of the Father." Glory be to God. This is a powerful picture, mind you, because the Bible says, "Oh, Jesus, that he forevermore sits at the right hand of the Father." But when Stephen is witnessing, Jesus stands up. Glory be to God. Something's about to happen. And what's about to happen is he is watching the first Christian martyr. Hallelujah. Not deny Christ even in the face of death. And I believe Jesus himself stands to receive him. Glory be to God. And while he receives him, the man who was hauling the coat, because the people, what they used to do, they just take off the coat and give it to somebody, so they could try to, they could park in the rock better. The coat was heavy. How many of y'all have played parking before? I mean, parking was an old game. Y'all might be too young for parking. You take that tennis ball and that was your lunchtime activity. Don't be close to the man with the ball. They taking off their cloak so they could park good. All the way, so they want a good throw. Glory be to God. So they're socking this man and, and Saul is there. Why won't this man ask for mercy? Because he, he refuses to deny Christ. Now, y'all think that's strange and that's, that's from Gladiator age and that's, that's crazy stuff. Nobody can do that today. No, it was just done recently and it's still being done. Don't forget, that group that President Trump just shut down in his first term in office, what were they called again? Who was cutting off the head of Christians? Al Qaeda, no, that's something, that's the next group. ISIS. Yeah, because Al Qaeda's in existence. ISIS, ISIS was there, taking Christian men over that eastern part of the world. This is just like two years ago, two, three, four, five years ago, and was beheading them. And what accent, "Do you still believe in Jesus?" And those men with the black thing on their head kneeling down with their hands tied, "I still believe in Jesus." Head, God. Don't laugh. That's real. That, that happened days ago, not, not, not a thousand, two thousand years ago. And really, they will follow in scripture. Don't deny him even unto death. Because this life is but for a moment. And your eternal life begins when you close these eyes and open the next. Glory be to God. Trusting him amidst the darkness. He must believe that he is and that also, because this is gonna change, this is gonna change the way you pray. When you believe that he is a reward of them that diligently seek Him, you won't be halfway pandering when you pray to him no more. You're gonna pray with faith, you're gonna pray with authority. I was in a meeting last night. I mean, I'm in meetings every night this week, Ellen Neely. Had a long meeting last night here with the associate that, association that I had. And I ended up, I said, "Lord, how I get here?" I ended up talking about the fact that our words have power and we have to be careful with who we agree with when they speak negative things over our life, even if they are medical And it's not to belittle the medical profession. Listen carefully what I'm saying. I gave this revelation many years ago. I can't remember, it was this Saturday or next Saturday. I get a revelation that, never forget, that we are three in one, just as the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost are three in one. We are spirit, body, and soul. So when a doctor says he sees a tumor, what is he examining? Only one of you, the body. But you're mort in your body. You have a spirit and you have a soul. Now, what is critical is how your soul, my God, this is good. What is critical is how your soul responds to the report that's given. I'm gonna say it again. What is critical is how your soul responds to the report that you're given. The reason why you don't understand it, because you don't understand what the soul is. Your soul is your mind, your will, and your emotion. When you come to Bible study, when you worship, when you are praying, you are training your soul to submit to the will of God. If you abide in me and my words, abide in you, you will ask whatsoever you will and it shall be done unto you. So when you get the negative report, you say, "I choose to believe the report of the Lord. I thank you for your diagnosis. Now I know how to specifically pray, but my soul believes the word of God and my spirit is connected to God." So that's two beaten one. That one better line up and come into agreement with us and God. Somebody give God praise right there. Come on, give him praise. Must believe, you must believe. He that cometh to God must believe that he is and that he is a reward of them that diligently seek Him. Not casually seek Him, but diligently. Repeat after me, not casually, but diligently. But it's trust. Trust is a firm belief in the reliability, truth, or ability of someone or something. If you didn't write it on Sunday, write it now. Trust is a firm belief in the reliability, truth, or ability of someone or something. Now, I said to you that at any point, Yeshua could have stopped the crucifixion process. Translation, at any point, he could have stopped them from killing him. Anybody here will let somebody kill them who you know you're stronger than and you can stop them? I don't think so. You will stop them. For Jesus not, for Jesus not to abandon this whole murder plot of a Sanhedrin and the Roman government that they was using to kill him, because the Roman government didn't really, wasn't even concerned about him to that extent. The Sanhedrin made him a big issue in their eyes. This man is disrupting the city. This man is saying he is king. He was trying to, in the Bahamas, we say, he was trying to goosey them. How do I translate that to the international people? Give me, give me another word. I'm sorry now. He was trying to, Jimmy, that's, that's a baby. He was trying to hoodwink. They understand that from, from, who said that? That's Malcolm X. They're trying to hoodwink them. I don't know, if you don't get a word, give it, throw it to me. They were trying, they were trying to push him, seduce. That's the best one I can get. They were trying to seduce the Romans to get involved with the process of killing this man who they feel was stealing their thunder. Now, my wife, when she gave us teaching, Lady Roll, gave a teaching on trust. She talked about the trust in the noun position and the verb position. And we both agree that you need to have two. So how it works is this, you must practice trusting God, verb, until you possess trust, the noun, in all that God has said. Do you get that? I possess it. It's now a part of me. Someone says, "A part of me." Yeah. So whenever I face an obstacle, whenever I face a challenge, I immediately turn to my faith in God to bring me out of that circumstance. He is able to do, according to Ephesians 3:20, exceedingly, abundantly, above all. That's a lot of superlatives that I think, ask, or imagine. We are called to be the light of the world. Matthew 5:14 tells us that. Christ says, he declares to believer, "You are light. Do not merge with the darkness. Do not merge with the darkness." We believers are therefore emissaries. What's another word for emissary? Ambassador. Yeah, literally means ambassador. We are believers are therefore emissaries of light placed in a dark world on a God assignment. Though we are carriers of light or the message of light, we are often made to carry that message to some dark spaces. I want to park here for a second. Amidst some very dark circumstances. Why do I say that? I say that because sometimes as a believer, you come into Christ, especially if you came into one of those high-filled revival services where everybody, the, the energy is high, you are excited when you come in. But what you don't know is not too long after, you're gonna start getting tested. And the enemy is not a fool. He's smart. He has your rap sheet. I talk about it so often. He knows what you like. And so for it to be a, a test of any kind of weight or measure, it needs to be a test on things that you like. And so this is why mentorship and discipleship is so important. Because we ought not leave the baby, Christ ate the baby, sorry, Christian ignorant to the fact that there are some tests that are going to come your way quickly. Them old friends, an old girlfriend, old boyfriend, temptation from the drug boys, the gang boys, even, even the gay boys. You have to say that because we want you to be prepared, hands up. And they don't need me in fighting. I'm talking about in terms of your defenses. So, so, so you say to them, not because you get saved means that Jesus can put three angels in front of you to cause you not to be tested. No, you will be tested and you will be tested often. Now, the problem comes when a believer who's been a believer for 35 years is still acting like a believer who just got saved three months ago. Something is wrong, apostle? This is what, we have so many people in the body of Christ who have skipped the discipleship process because they get saved and they only come at church on Sunday. So they come for, sorry, I forgot, they come for the big show. They sit in the back, they dress up, they look nice and they go through the motion. And then they go back into the week and they, and they do everything that they always used to do and they try to figure out why they're not growing spiritually? Why is God not showing up for them in this big revelatory way? What, what kind of work are you putting in? You don't, you don't, you don't bring, you don't born a baby and just leave it there in the crib? They won't be alive very long. So when, when you, when you are a babe in Christ, you need to be nurtured. Well, Jesus had that very big encounter with Zacchus. He says, "Zacchus, you, you need to be born again." Zacchus is confused. Zacchus was supposed to be a smart man. He was a, he was a wealthy man.[1769.03] Zacchaeus is confused. Zacchaeus was supposed to be a smart man. He was a, he was a wealthy man. Zacchaeus says, do I, what, get small and go back in my mother? Jesus says, are you supposed to be intelligent? A leading man in Israel? What are you talking about? No, you have to be, now you were born of the flesh through your mother. Now you must be born of the spirit. You need to be regenerated. Smart student, how does this happen? Romans 12, tell me. Romans 12? Go on. I have a session therefore, brethren. Yep. That you present your body as a living sacrifice, holy, acceptable unto God. Which is your what? Reasonable service. Don't consider it a big deal. You have to do it because in your flesh dwelleth no good thing. If you don't kill your flesh, your flesh won't kill you. Write that down. If you don't kill your flesh, your flesh is gonna kill you. You have to tell your flesh what not to do. Simple, this is gonna be simple and you can probably laugh. You have to tell your flesh when to stop eating. It won't stop. You have to tell it to stop drinking. And I don't even mean rum. I'm just talking about drinking period. You know, children are home from school and the friends stay open and they just keep drinking, 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 drinking. You ever tell your flesh stop? You know what you don't have to tell the flesh stop? Maybe drinking water. It's stop by itself. You have, you have to tell your flesh stop. Ain't that flesh about a no good thing? Because the flesh will kill itself if you don't kill it, which means bring it under subtraction. Now, trust in the midst of dark places is this, even though we are carriers of light, while we're carrying light, because many are the afflictions of the righteous, oftentimes we are attacked while we are carrying the light. Oftentimes we are going through tests and trials while we are carrying light. And then amidst that, God sometimes calls us to be light in dark places. And it's very trying to do so because everybody seems to be having fun in the dark. And here you are supposed to be Mr. Oddball Out or Miss Oddball Out and stand for righteousness and not blend in. But you have to be like Deacon Stephen. You have to be okay with doing it. And it is not as hard for us as it was for him. Anybody's throwing us to death. All you have to do is don't blend in with the sin. Don't blend in with the cardinality. Don't blend in with the conversation. Don't blend in with the feeling. Up. Say that up, Kimberly. Stand up, stand strong. Don't be ashamed of the gospel of Christ. And though, woo, like I heard Job just now, and though he may slay you, maybe you're thinking in the moment, though he slayed me, yet will I? That's our theme, man. Say it loud. Though he slayed me, yet will I? What are you trusting him for? You're trusting him to bring you up? You're trusting him to give you victory. And he likes to be trusted. Y'all didn't hear me. I said, he likes to be trusted. He that comeeth to God, before you even say what you want or need, he says, you got to believe that I am. That I'm more powerful than world boss. That's a horrible joke. You gotta believe that he has what you need for your sustenance. If you trust him, here's a big test. You will seek him first. Put Matthew 6:33 on the screen, please. If you trust him, you will seek him first. Lord, help me to not use you always as a last resort. Is that a good prayer? Lord, help me to not become comfortable using you as a last resort. But seek he first. The kingdom of God, watch this, and his way of living. And all these things will be added unto you. The world is a dark place and I've dreamed about judgment several days ago. Lady Roll just called me night before last on their trip and says she had a scary dream about judgment coming. She saw a fire. I don't know, maybe she saw the Solomon thing. She said, it was so real, she jumped out of the car and started running in her dream. Um, but it could be something else that's coming. I don't say this to scare you. I say this to encourage us to stay in the secret place. Because no matter what judgment comes, if you are on the Lord's side, you will be protected. You will be safe. You will have victory. Glory be to God. He that dwell in in the secret place of the most high God shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty. I will save the Lord. He is my refuge and my fortress. My God in him will, watch the word, I trust, I will rely on him and his ability. Surely, he shall deliver thee from the snare of the folly. You have to believe, stay in the position of faith. And from the noisome pestilence, he shall cover thee with his feathers and under his wings shalt thou trust. His truth shall be thy shield and buckler. Somebody just was telling the story about how they found this hen, uh, this fire situation that happened, not here in the Bahamas, but they went in and they saw that a hen was right there sitting and they went to move it and the, the hen was dead. But under it, its chicks walked out alive and safe. Hen gave his life to make sure the chicks were covered and safe. He shall cover thee with his feathers and under his wings shalt thou trust his truth, shalt be thy shield and buckler. Thou shalt not be afraid. You don't have permission to be afraid for the terror by night. Things will happen, things will come, but we will not be afraid, nor for the arrow that flies by day, nor for the pestilence that walketh in darkness, nor for the destruction that wasted in noonday. A thousand shall fall at thy side, ten thousand at thy right hand, but it shall not come nigh thee. Only with your eyes shalt thou behold and see the reward of the wicked, don't let what your eyes see make you afraid. Glory be to God. Because like Elijah said to the lad, great is he that's with you. We outnumber those enemies you see. You just can't see the hosts of angels that's surrounding them. Glory be to God. A thousand shall fall at thy side, ten thousand at thy right hand, but it shall not come nigh thee. Only with thine eyes shalt thou behold and see the reward of the wicked. Why? Listen. Because you have made the Lord, which is my refuge, even the most high, thy habitation. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. On a hill there's a cross.
Even parents that are still allowing their children to watch these things, God, and some of them that are indulgent and watching it themselves, oh God. Father, commit them right now in the name of Jesus.
Spirit of the Lord, God, I thank you for the spirit of me. I thank you for Jehovah Rapha, missing this house, God. Every soul, God, every soul, like how the word of God talks about.
Away at college, Father God. I pray a special blessing over them, Father God, a special covering. I pray, Father God, that you just surround you, surround them. To be a warrant and security, Father God, and know that the enemy truly wants to take them out, Father, but you have the victory, so therefore we have the victory.